All right, good evening. This is the Town of New Canaan Town Council regular meeting. It's Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It's seven oh two P M. Welcome. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call. We have Cub Scout troop number forty-five. All please rise and face the flag, and we'll have the Cub Scouts lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nice job, guys. I think I think we set a new record tonight. We've got the entire front row filled with Cub Scouts. This is awesome, guys. Thank you so much for coming out. You look great. The uniforms look great. Everybody's neat, dressed up, beautiful. Thank you so much for coming out. Uh, you want to say a few words about what's going on and? Great. And Steve, you've been here before, so your old hat. So welcome back.
You know, again, just as a maybe a reminder, so we started this on the program of Saint Anthony, nineteen. Uh, the Charlie had a workout trip from one of fifty years that went away in the nineteen eighties. Uh, we have one of our legacy Eagle Scouts here.
I don't fit my uniform anymore, so.
For our photos of him at the Purple Society. Um, but we're really excited. We've got a lot of growth in the Cub Scout program the past two years. Uh, we're up to about thirty kids in the whole program now to about fifty families. Scott was very helpful in New Canaan and really appreciate the opportunity now to be here tonight, but also just to work on all types of projects related to benefits and serve the community. So a lot of great partners in town, a lot of projects for us to work on. So whether they're an Eagle project or otherwise, um, as you're around doing things in town, I'm sure you'll see us and others, uh, doing the work that Scouts do. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming out tonight. You guys look great. Good luck. Good luck the rest of the way. Earn some more badges and keep it rolling. All right, guys, you're dismissed. You don't have to sit through this meeting. It's a long one. Thank you. All right, moving on to roll call. Penny, will you call or roll?
Robin Bates-Mason here. Rita Patino here. Tom Butterworth here. Mark Trumsky here. Steve Carl here. Luke Kaufman.
Here.
He's here. He's on the phone.
I'm on the phone.
Thanks, Luke. We got you.
Mike Morrow.
Here.
Uh, Maria Norton here. Kimberly Norton here. Hillary Ormon here. Christina Ross here. Penny Young here. Oh, present in the cabin fort.
Thank you, Penny. All right, uh, next up, approval of minutes. We've got three meetings here. We've got the public hearing, January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, the regular meeting, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and a special meeting on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Everybody's had a chance to look through the minutes. Are there any deletions, corrections, additions?
I have a question or a suggestion. The, um, get the date, but it's it was the special, the public hearing.
Yep.
Uh, at the end, we have, uh, attached, uh, Joe Palo's presentation, and I just, I don't know if that's a standard thing to do.
Yeah.
This, okay. So is there a way to say in there that that doesn't represent the, uh, any determinations by the Town Council? That we haven't considered or adopted that document because it sort of makes me wonder in the minutes, it looks like it's a report of what we had done, but of course it's not.
Yeah, there are times when when people put their comments in writing and we attach them to the minutes, and I think that's what we did, Tucker. Is am I correct there? Okay.
Yeah, it just, there's no, if we could say which the Town Council has neither considered or adopted. Just to clarify that it's, it doesn't reflect something that we prepared.
Well, he's listed as a speaker, so. Then there's no vote.
Um, it might be an excess of caution, but yeah.
We we take the point, but I think if you go back in in minutes, right? I mean, we we usually like somebody could could attach their comments or letter and put it in writing, and we just. Right. Right. Yeah, so maybe just add add the word stuckers just so to make it clear.
And which the Town Council has neither considered or adopted.
Because it's still an open item. All right, uh, with that, any other public, any other comments on the minutes? Seeing none, approved by unanimous consent. Thank you very much. Moving on to public comments. At number three, members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to number of speakers. Would anybody from the public like to speak? John Goodwin, welcome. What a nice surprise.
Tiger just told me to be quick, and I said to Tiger, I'd sat on P and Z for about seven. I will be quick. Um, seventeen, John Goodwin, Seventy Bay Berry Road, something like that. I lost track. I want to just quickly comment on the proposed Affordable Housing Committee. Uh, first thing I want to do is I want to, uh, thank Tom Butterworth, who kept me in the loop on this. I was not able to attend the ordinance, uh, their subcommittee meetings because I had a big travel schedule, but I'll be quick. In August, I outlined an affordable housing committee that would include other housing, but perhaps eight thirty G focus is the right idea for this committee. Um, but it cannot successfully operate in a vacuum, and that has implications. That includes, one, expect the committee to need consulting resources. The subcommittee heard how complicated it is to try and find applicable properties, evaluate them and finance them. And then there's the moratorium filing process. You may have a Scott Hobbs or Krista Nielsen or an Arthur Cassavan to help, but you will need to pay for expertise if we are going to accelerate this process. Second, I recently made a comment that planning and zoning staff should be involved with the committee, and let me explain why. Um, this committee cannot operate in a vacuum. They will look at opportunities that may include mixed-use senior housing workforce, and so there has to be a sharing of intelligence and work. While there will be a planning and zoning rep, this is best driven at the staff level, not at the P and Z commission level. To be more clear, a well-functioning land use department of a town is the core driver of development planning. So I believe their expertise, resources, and central role in town planning requires them to be part of this committee in a significant way. Summarize, I applaud the ordinance committee giving more leeway to the committee on how to run itself, but as I listened to the hearings, um, there were additional things in the original draft, which I I felt was just putting too much handcuffs on them. Uh, second, the Affordable Housing Committee will not have sufficient expertise or time to do much of its work, so think additional resources. Third, the Planning and Zoning Department will be needed to be significantly involved to provide its expertise and support and provide to the town the coherence of an overall housing strategy. Finally, unfortunately, and as the ordinance committee heard in testimony, this is going to be really hard. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, and just sit right there for a minute. You're not gonna get away that easily because while we while we while we have, that's while we have the honor of you coming to our meetings, and it's always, it's interesting. When you sit on this side of the desk for so long, it's always difficult to sit on that side. But anyway, while you're here, does anybody have any questions for John? I mean, because we are talking about this ordinance, uh, at length, so anybody want to, uh?
Just questions or do you?
Yeah, just question, just question for John while we have him at the mic. I mean, I I think John's been around this issue for so long that, you know, to me, there's Scott Hobbs is one of the, you know, obviously our number one guy, but if there's a second number one, number one, and number two, it's John. I mean, we have, John's got so much experience that it's, uh, on the topic. Christina.
John, would you be able to submit a copy of what you just read?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's perfect. Anybody else? Mike? Is that your thumb? Okay, thank you. Yeah, so just to just to, uh, talk about what John mentions, I think, you know, during the during the, um, deliberations that we had on the ordinance committee, uh, we did talk about, you know, having the resources, and we've got to figure out a way to fund this committee in a in some nature, some way. So that's going to come through, obviously through the Board of Finance, so we will address that in somehow in language to make sure that it's very apparent that there's going to be financial resources needed here. So and I think that's one of the number one things that you've you've discussed.
Yeah, my learning over the years is what my head spins. When, um, people start talking about criteria, the moratoriums, as well as, you know, looking at projects and the like. And, you know, Scott has some good guys working for him. There's consultants we've used over the years, which part of the P O C D process, for example. But the bottom line is, and and one of the things you all said was you wanted some people who were, you know, not longtime town people, which I think is really, really good. I completely agree with that. But you're gonna need expertise, so you got to pay for it.
Hillary.
Uh, did, do you have an opinion about the number, like the size of the committee as it's currently in the?
Where did you guys end up at nine?
We ended up at nine, so four from a boards and commissions, so planning and zoning, Board of Finance, Town Council, um,
Housing Authority.
And Housing Authority, and then five at-large members who don't currently.
I think that's a good number.
You think that's a good number?
I do. Okay, great. I think if I I think you thought about less.
We thought about fewer, we thought maybe three at-large members and
Yeah.
four, and then obviously the Board of Selectmen as an ex officio member. Um, so those were kind of the two options that we were weighing.
No, I think nine's a good number.
Great.
Thank you.
Hi, John, I have a question.
Oh, uh, Kim.
Christina, you wanna go?
Okay, John, I was I was thinking about the financial aspect of it, and it hasn't been that we have given a committee, um, a budget to work with, and I was wondering if we shouldn't put it through land use so that when a consultant is required, so it should be added to the land use budget.
I I agree with that a hundred percent.
Okay.
And and historically, that's how we got the funding anyway. So historically, if we were doing a study or whatever, a consultant, you know, whatever it was, for example, not in the last moratorium, but on the previous moratorium, we had, we paid a woman named Betty Brochus, who unfortunately had retired for the most recent one. And we we financed that through the planning and zoning budget, so that that's the right way to do it, in my opinion. And that's, you know, and that, you you know, the point I'm trying to make is that this is a land use function.
Mm-hmm.
So at the staff level, you have to have the land use department as part of this endeavor, in my view.
Kim?
Yeah, hi, John. I just had a question. Are there any types of consultants, specific categories or ideas that you have that would be helpful to, uh, for the committee to consult with? I mean, not necessarily a person, but like areas of expertise?
There's, well, there's a guy named David McCarthy, who, if if you know who he is, he he works for the Housing Authority. I mean, he would be a classic, you know, he would be a great person to use, and maybe we already have him on the payroll anyway, but that's one type, somebody who knows, um, you know, the whole affordable housing issues inside out. Second possibility, I mean, that type of consultant would be my top choice. Second type would be a more general consultant, for example, the commission use has used over the years, a guy named Glenn Curl, Glenn Curlander, somebody I worked with, uh, Glenn Chalder.
Right.
Um, and and I wouldn't be surprised if Glenn ends up working on the P O C D process. Um, but that would be the second type, but it it's more of a McCarthy type, because just take my word for it, this stuff is so complicated.
Uh, Tom, do you have a question or?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I I agree with everything you said. It, to me, is just a question of in which document those concepts appear, and it didn't, I wasn't comfortable bypassing the budget process or bypassing the land use budget or or certainly I wasn't comfortable saying that we should get a third of the town planner's time or something along those lines.
Yeah.
Because other people have claim to that.
Yeah.
And so it it seems to me that the the committee, and I would fully support when the committee comes out and says, wait a minute, in order to do this well, we need X and Y and Z. You got my vote.
But but one thing to remember is that the planner reports up through town hall. The land use department does not report to P and Z. So
Well, that just, you know, just.
They support P and Z. Of course they do. They're they're critical to P and Z. I mean, who knows better than I? But and but, you know, and I guess the other point I'm trying to make is is these things are so intertwined. It it's really a planning and zoning type function, you know, and I you've chosen to say, let's focus this committee on eight thirty G, which, when I first, you know, looked at that draft, I said, well, you know, how's that gonna work? And, you know, as I thought more about it, but the proviso is you just have to have very close communication with P and Z, but in my opinion, particularly importantly, with the land use department. So I don't view it as, you know, it it's already a function within the land use department, Tom. So.
So, so we don't need the committee?
Well, you do. I think you do need the committee. I the it's already that that support function.
So it's a coordination issue?
Yeah.
We're all for that.
Yeah.
All right, last one, Rita.
Yes, so thank you so much for your advice. Um, so in looking at candidates that should be on this committee, what advice would you give in terms of like the skills and experience that should be kind of recruited and looked for?
Yeah, well, we already have the experts coming from the respective commissions, and, you know, I think you've chose wisely in terms of, you know, which commissions committees you're going to use. Um, in terms of a skill set, um, smart, willing to put in long hours. Um, that's one, and then obviously two would be, I mean, for example, I'm gonna name names, but, you know, in Art Cassavan, he already sits on P and Z. But if you could find an Art Cassavan, Art Cassavan, if you don't know Art, he did affordable housing lending, lending pretty much for his entire career. So he knows this.
So so many experience in that, in that field, in that area. Yeah.
Well, thank you again, John. Thanks for your comments. Thanks for coming out. Uh, I will say, keep your cell phone on because we're looking for somebody named John Goodwin.
You guys said you don't want any more.
Hey, come on. Don't be surprised if your phone rings. All right, any other public comments? Thank you very much. All right, uh, just to set expectations, we're at seven nineteen. We wanted to get into an executive session by eight thirty, so I'll I'll keep an eye on the clock as we move through these next items. Uh, number four, we have, uh, just a brief, uh, update from Ann Kelly Alenz on the, uh, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, otherwise known as CAFR. We love our acronyms. Oh, AFRA, okay. Okay.
I would, okay. Yeah, they changed everything around. They do it every couple of years. Um, so thank you for giving me time just to give you an update of where we are. Um, we did file an extension for the audit, um, which we're due right now to file by February twenty-eighth. Um, different reasons for that. Uh, one of the main ones is walking in in nine months, we lost not four of our six employees turnover, some retired. So it was the CFO, the comptroller, senior accountant and staff accountant. So there was a lot of knowledge and experience, um, background on that. So, you know, coming into it, we're coming in fresh to figure everything out, so I wanted to make sure that when we're doing the audit, we do it right, and we're comfortable with the numbers going out the door. So the plan right now is that, um, we're having a meeting in the morning with our draft document right now with the audit committee. They've they're going through their due diligence with everything, and um, the auditors and myself or my team are working all together with that. And then we're hoping if tomorrow it is in the shape that everybody is is happy with, we can then at some point maybe do avoid a vote, uh, within the, um, audit committee to pass it on to the Town Council. If not, we do have a follow-up meeting on the twenty-fourth, um, with the audit committee to make sure it's final at that stage, and everybody is happy with the document. So that, as you probably know, you have a special meeting on the twenty-seventh to approve it per, um, the ordinance or charter. I think it's charter. Um, so I want to thank you for coming together to make that happen because we do have to file it by the next day, or the auditors file it, we agree to it. Um, so, you know, it it was a challenging year coming in with that changeover in staff, certainly with, uh, different processes, but, uh, we're working through it. Everybody's come together to make sure it happens, that everybody's comfortable with the numbers and what we have.
Thank you, man. Thank you very much. I actually, uh, did talk to Bill, uh, Parret today, and he echoed the same thing. They said that it's just, it was a matter of timing and, uh, next, next time we meet, we're gonna have members of the audit committee, at least at that twenty-seventh meeting, we'll have them here as well, so.
Yeah, and and we have.
Oh, I didn't see. I'm sorry, Chuck. Chuck is there.
Chuck and the due diligence they've been doing. Yeah.
Oh. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, take care. All right, item number five. Proposed ordinance, final review, those ordinances as follows. We have, uh, the established Affordable Housing Committee and the ordinance regarding sale or lease of town on real property. Uh, just to give some background on these two, obviously, everybody's up to speed with what we've been talking about on these ordinances. Uh, from a timing perspective, uh, we weren't able to get our, um, notices in the paper in time, so we still have to do a public hearing for, you know, for final, final, but, uh, I don't know whether, uh, Tucker, so where are we in terms of scheduling those, um, ordinances or the, um, notices?
And advertiser, you don't have any changes tonight. That's how we set up the ad. It'll go in the new, uh, Stanford, the Penn and advertiser, Stanford, a Stanford advocate this Friday, um, which, you know, satisfies the two weekly postings. Um, if there's occasions tonight, that could set it back a little bit because we have to change the the actual ad. Uh, and then the plan was to have a public hearing and vote at that meeting on the twenty-seventh, since you'll hear your daughter, and then you have time to have a public hearing vote on the ordinance.
Okay, great. Yeah, so, you know, the idea tonight, we've all, we've talked about these two at length, and we talked about them in subcommittee, and then we brought them up to the council, but we can, we can discuss the any change, any changes or language changes we want to do before they're noticed. Remember, once they're noticed in the paper, we can't fundamentally change the meaning of the ordinance. If we discover it after we noticed it, that, you know, we 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 have a sentence or two that we need to add, as long as it doesn't really change the meaning, we're okay with that, but, uh, we have to go to go to publication the way these ordinances will actually read. So, uh, so with that, Tom, I don't know, is there, uh, you want to make some comments about, well, let's do one at a time. The first one was the Affordable Housing Committee. We just heard from John.
Okay, and in the interest of time, why don't we just go through the the section headings and give us a a brief point on each one of them, and if you guys have concerns that we can go into greater depth, we can read them or whatever. But the, um, dash one is about establishing the members in the terms, and and as we referenced earlier, there was, um, there's a concept that this would, this would involve nine members, five at large from the from town residents, um, and one each from the four boards, planning and zoning, housing authority, New Canaan, Town Council, and Board of Finance. Um, there was some discussion that that should be three, but we settled on five. Um, I don't know if there are any questions about that. Um, organization is pretty much pro forma. It's that this paragraph appears in many ordinances. It's just the logistics of how you elect a chair and a secretary, et cetera. Um, mission is 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 really important. Uh, it says, the committee shall work with the Housing Authority of the Town of New Canaan and other town bodies. Two things, to increase the number of affordable housing units and to maintain local control of housing development to achieve these purposes. I mean, to recommend a plan to maintain successive moratoria under section L of eight thirty G. Um, so some people have a broader sense of the scope of what we should be tackling, but I think there was a feeling on the committee that that the most important thing by far was keeping local control and and getting moratoria under eight thirty G, and that in of itself is incredibly ambitious, and it'll require, um, new resources, uh, possibly some, some new appropriations. And so that that is indeed, as as John said, the focus, it doesn't foreclose the committee considering other initiatives, but that is clearly the main, uh, purpose, and it gets somewhat specific about, um, show us some scenarios to to try to build support, uh, for resources and, um, and some of the decision-making, uh, and test those with the public. And then dash four involves public education, so, uh, that would be an important function of the of the committee. Um, educate people on eight thirty G itself, any planned or pending applications, uh, planned or pending affordable housing developments and locations. Uh, funding merely says that it may or may not be adequate to rely on the current house, Affordable Housing Trust Fund. That's sort of a technical point. Um, and then the committee would be responsible for generating certain reports. So there clearly is a sort of a dual function of education and consensus building and try to finding resources to do this challenge. Any, uh, comments or questions?
I I just have one question. Terms of funding. I mean, if if we do approve this, should there be something in the budget?
Yeah, as soon as possible. A- and I guess that, uh,
Well, we're we're approving it in time. If we get it done on the twenty-seven and we we get that uh, noti- notice, and we're we're actually, we're still before the Board of Finance actually, you know, puts through the budget to us, so there's still be time for them to add some sort of line item to that land use.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure since we can't add that.
Right.
You have three more meetings, uh, the twenty-eightth, the twenty-eighth, for a final review, um, and now the seventh of March, for the follow-up, and then the ninth of November.
Okay, so I just think it's something that, so so the likelihood would be, I don't know that we get an, uh, Affordable Housing Committee established in time, but the likelihood would be that a couple of volunteers from the council would go to the Board of Finance meeting and give them the background and recommend that we add this, uh, based on what we've done. We'll explain why. And, uh, you know, and that's usually, that would be a good way to to, uh,
Which leads to the next point, which is
How much?
Someone should start thinking about talking to people more intelligent than we are on how much
How much?
Given what what roles are needed and 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 assets and et cetera. So just something to think about.
Yeah, that could be part of the presentation, but I would imagine, uh, we may even want to bring in a a member of the Board of Finance prior to that meeting to so that everybody's up to speed. So, um, one, one, uh, Hillary and Tom, and and I'm happy to join as well, you know, to try to try to move this forward, so as far as the funding side of it.
So if there are no comments, then we'll.
I I have a comment.
Oh, please.
Okay, first, I want to thank Tom and Hillary for putting this together, and the whole bylaws and ordinance committee, I think, did a great job. It's the first time I've done this, and I think it worked really well. Um, I was just wondering on mission point number A, if there's a way to bring in eight thirty G into the first sentence somehow that people feel comfortable with, just because it says to increase the number of affordable housing units in New Canaan, but it doesn't say why we're forming the whole committee is more consistent to meet the stand, the demands of eight thirty G. You did have that in the second sentence, but I'm just wondering if there's a way to integrate the eight thirty G general statutes, reverse the order or something, because that's, um, it just, to me, seems, um, important to put that in there sooner.
I think the 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 question that you've, um, raised to me, the the issue that you're raising is is eight thirty G the exclusive focus of the committee or the primary focus? And the way it's drafted, it's the primary focus. It doesn't rule out the committee exploring other things, as long as it's understood that that's really secondary to the main purpose, and I'll just to give an example, John Goodwin felt feels very strongly that there are other areas of affordable housing that that
Yeah.
that should be considered, so.
I don't disagree with that, but I'm just saying reverse the order because I see the urgency being to meet the demands of eight thirty G, not the the, um, you know, the impetus for the committee is to kind of take us out of the crisis that we're in. Affordable housing can be part of their purview, but to me, it's more of the eight thirty G moratorium. So that's why I'm saying, can it be reworked so it's more in the first sentence, because that's really.
I wouldn't mind if if we were in the committee process, but given the 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 place we are in the process, be much cleaner so that we can advertise this and get it adopted quickly. If 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 we don't make any, uh, changes that don't change the real.
I thought that's why we were meeting in Town Council is to discuss wording. So I'm not saying change what we did in bylaws and ordinances. I'm just saying, can we change the wording, so it's a minor change? It doesn't take away what we worked on. It just brings eight thirty G into the mission, because to me, that's the whole reason, one of the reasons, the primary reason of why we're forming the committee.
I defer to others.
Other people.
Kim, Kim, I think that's an excellent point. I mean, I I fully support that. I think that's an excellent, uh, point that you made.
Thanks, Luke.
Uh, Hillary.
Um, I I totally hear you. I I think it's, um, the way I've always thought about drafting, in particular with statute, is that you start out a little bit more general, and then you, um, define it later, because if you if you put that in the first sentence, it does sort of foreclose the possibility, especially in a mission of the committee taking on anything outside of eight thirty G. So the nice thing about having a more general statement as the first sentence of the mission is that it does have a broader view of what affordable housing is, and then the second sentence where it specifically talks about eight thirty G. It it identifies what the first priority should be, instead of limiting it, because if you put eight thirty G, the way I read it, if you put eight thirty G in the first sentence, it identifies it as the sole thing of affordable housing that, um, but I hear you. It is certainly the focus now, and you're correct. It is the impetus for why we are forming this, and it's the what should be focused on above all other things. But I think to the extent that we don't want to be, um, necessarily amending the statute, once we want to focus on senior housing, I mean, I mean, the hope is we get affordable, we get eight thirty G rolling and we get these successive moratoria, but then we can. Have this committee set up and doing that and they can focus on other things. I think that's the.
I, I completely agree, Hillary. That's why I just want to change, I'm suggesting changing the order of the sentences. So I totally agree. Like, can we get one thing done? And then move on to like other things, the other.
I think it's semantic, but the way I read statutes, it's better to start general. Like, that's how I've always learned about drafting is start general and then get specific so that you're not limiting. Them in the first, but I hear you.
Uh, all right, we gotta keep moving here.
Uh, Hillary, to your point, I just want to ask if eight thirty G may be changing and there may be substituted by a new. Set of legislative um. Actions. Should we specifically say eight thirty G and or any subsequent um revisions?
We asked, uh.
Yeah.
We asked the lawyers. Whether that was a, a standard or appropriate approach and, and they said, oh, not necessary if. And, and it's unlikely that, that eight thirty G will go away and be an invalid reference. Um, so that's why it, it doesn't uh do what you just suggested.
But does it limited only take thirty G?
What's that?
Does it limited only take thirty G?
I didn't understand the first few words.
Is it limited, is it limited?
No, it's clearly not. We just said the first sentence doesn't mention eight thirty G. It leaves open the ability to work on other affordable housing projects.
Which is sort of the beauty of leaving it a little bit more general. I'm sorry to interrupt.
I agree.
I think because we're so far along in the process of, if, if you want to make a motion and we take a quick vote. Because we have to decide whether to basically to.
I would say that it has the intent of what you are mentioning, Kim, because I think the second sentence is dependent on. The first sentence. Um, you, you're just saying it in a different way. You're basically saying this is our mission, but to do that, we're going to focus on it. You know what I mean? I don't think it really needs to be in the first sentence because. The second sentence is dependent on that explanation. So I think it does what you want it to do.
Okay.
Change it after the public hearing is input, you know, obtained at the public hearing then.
Yeah, you can.
Do your final.
Yeah, I mean, and I think it's so close. I don't think it alters the, the meaning of the, of the ordinance in any way, but it, you know, it, I think. The way it's written, as long as we can get this out and get it to the, get it into the, get it printed, I think. The way it is, I've read it a bunch of times and I, I, I like the way it reads, so. Um, I'm okay with it the way it, so, but I mean, if, if there's enough, do, is there enough feeling? I, I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is everybody's okay with it. There may be a couple of people that aren't, but we're, we're close, right? Anybody want to vote on this or we?
I just wanted to, do we want to incorporate the town employee? Do we have to incorporate having a? Um. You know, someone from the land use employee on the committee?
Yes, we should.
Because right now it isn't really incorporated. Where would that person fit in under this description if the employee did not live in town?
Well, for one thing, that, uh, John's point was the committee will accomplish absolutely nothing. Without the support of town staff. I mean, th- they're embedded through this whole process. So I, I don't know, we haven't thought of, and one of the reasons I'm hesitant is because we haven't thought about that in detail, but as I think of it now. To pick one employee and say, okay, you're, you're a committee, a voting committee member, leaving aside everybody else who's not.
Yeah, I think the, the wise thing is to let the committee once formed. Adopt the, you know, adopt that person into the group and, you know, that every time there's a change in employment. You're gonna have a different person that you're gonna want in that role. So to me, I'd leave that open to the committee and the committee. Whenever we form these committees, they evolve over the years and they change things. And that's the nice thing about not making these ordinances so tight and so conforming. That the committee can't work. We wanted to have that committee be able to make those decisions and bring the help in that they need to get the job done.
Committee has to adopt and fu- and get funding for an operational strategy. That's what the committee needs to do. That's.
And there's.
We're just.
There will be somebody from this, this panel presumably on that committee, and we've now made it clear that we want the help of. Staff from planning and zoning. So somebody here will make that clear that we will need that help.
Well, I see it actually is included by saying the committee will work with other town bodies. So it is sort of built in there.
All right, so. So do we, we need a, we need a motion and a vote to adopt the language the way it is tonight or? As presented, okay, so. Uh, maybe just a quick raise of hands as presented and we'll move on to uh, to further first one to get it published. All in favor? That's, that's unanimous. Thank you. Luke, you're out there. You okay?
Absolute, absolutely. I a hundred percent support this and thank you very much.
All right, thanks Luke. All right, item number uh. Actually, letter B there, ordinance regarding the sale or lease of town owned real property. This one was a lot easier than, a lot easier, so. Maybe we can run through this one quickly.
Yeah, this one clearly is intended to fill what is perceived to be a void. Maybe not everybody agrees with that, but most of us think it's a void. In, when the town goes to sell town property. Uh, state law says town council has to have a hearing. But it doesn't say the town council has to vote. And it seems strange to a lot of us that we go through that process sort of emasculated as if, as if it were. Telling the people who come to the hearing that we can't do anything about what they're telling us. And so, and this was, this is. Thanks to Christina for pushing this for so long. It's, it, it's to, it's sort of close that loop and, and really just pattern the way the state law is adopted. But, but do the work in it, in the structure of an ordinance. And basically. The point of this is anytime state law would require a hearing, we get a vote. That's what this is supposed to do. So the, the clear uh main section is very. Very obvious, very easily understood. No, no sale, lease or nor sale. Or lease of real property uh owned by the town should be valid unless approved by the town council. These exceptions uh merely pattern what in state law. Are exceptions from the hearing requirement. So, yeah.
Okay, so that's the question. This is more in terms of semantics. Is there a reason why you said? This is really, it's not, it's not rhetorical. I really want to know. Um, why you said no sale or lease of real property owned by the town shall be valid unless approved instead of saying. The sale. Uh, or lease of real property requires the approval of town council. Like, was there a reason why you chose the word?
Don't remember, but I think it's because that's the way the state statute reads.
Based on like a.
And I was just trying to track and cement that point that we're running in tandem. If you need a hearing, we get a vote. And so I, I didn't want to stray very far from what the state statute says. But I think those two things mean, mean the same thing.
Statute language.
Is that, it's, I, I was curious because in my head I was thinking why, like that, it seems more awkward to me to, to write it this way. And so I was just curious why that was done.
That's lawyers for you.
Yes. Why say in two words what you. I have a very quick just um correction in the title of the ordinance. It says ordinance regarding the sale of lease instead of sale or lease. So I just, that's just a minor correction.
That's a good pickup though.
At the very top.
At the very top.
Yeah.
Oh, no change in, no material changes from me.
Thank you.
All right, just uh, Ron.
So I don't know, Tom and Hillary, if you could. It's a section number B. It's uh obviously one of the state sections, but where leases, but there's no change in real property. Um, would it come to us if the lease was? Reduce the amount or increased in front of town council? My question, because Kiwanis used to be in the recreation budget and now it's no longer, it's been moved over to rentals. So we don't see that anymore. So I'm just wondering.
Hmm.
If that's something that we get to see.
I mean, if it were like.
Because they're, they're still using the same property, I'm saying, but if the amount were to decrease, would town council have a vote on that?
Well, I don't think this is intended to apply to extensions or renewals of leases.
Okay.
Even if it's a dollar change. Having said that, most of these transactions come by us numerous times anyway.
Right.
Through the budget process.
But it, it would change if all of a sudden they're taking three quarters of the property.
Yes.
Right, then what they're.
Because that's a change in use.
Yeah. So, but it's, we don't have any say over it for rising the. Basically, we can't increase or decrease.
See that.
We haven't really got into setting fees and it's other, other domain.
Yeah, you mean like if like the Y contracted Kiwanis, we.
Well, it's just that they, I just think something always approved by the, the Parks and Rec Commission.
Yeah.
But it's no, now it's been taken out of the budget. It's been putting into the rental budget.
Yeah, this would not, yeah, this would not cover.
Which is new, so. Yeah, that's what I was just wondering.
Yeah, but like we had to, but we had to obviously review the playhouse and the change to their lease.
Right.
Right, because they were, they asked to incorporate the um.
New use.
Right, the new use.
Thank you.
Christina.
So in reading uh the approval required. The way that it reads, no sale of lease of real property owned by the town shall be valid unless approved by the town council. It doesn't stipulate when. So if uh the board of selectmen should come to us and say, we're considering selling, let's say, the Vine Cottage. And let's say we think we should pursue that idea. If we say, okay, does that mean that they have to come at the end and tell us what they're selling it for? And can they just sell it for a dollar because we initially gave an approval to move ahead, but not a final approval? It's not clear.
It's, it's up to the town council to decide when it gives its approval. And if we, if we didn't, if we wanted to, we could wait until that being the absolutely last step in the process.
And we still have to have a public hearing. It's still required by statute that we have a public.
Yes, but we want to have the, the final say after the public hearing and a vote. And I wonder whether it should be specified either before, after, or when.
I assume sale means like sold, like it's at the end. Are you thinking we need to do like approval to pursue the sale and then?
And then come back for a final vote at the end because we don't know when you're pursuing what the appraisals are going to come in as.
Well, this says no sale shall be valid, so it's, the sale is not valid unless we've approved it. The actual sale. So we can't say, okay, sell it. They have to come to us with the actual offer.
Right.
And we have to approve the offer and the sale because otherwise the sale is not valid.
So then we would vote at the end.
We have to accept the offer or the sale is invalid. I mean, that's, that's a legal sale.
Okay, but.
Is an offer.
Ten years from now, when we're not here. Or twenty, do we then, do we then take? A new body that's reinterpreting it or are we just? Finalizing it and making it clear when it's supposed to be.
Well, how have we, how have we operated since the old ordinance was in place? I mean, has the town council ever? Written that sort of blank check? Right, when it's been a lease or a, just said, okay, do whatever you want. You, you go figure it out and you have our approval for anything. I think we have to have some faith, particularly considering there's a public hearing requirement. And, and a sale is not, it's a sale of offer and an acceptance. I mean, a sale is not. You have my permission to go out and solicit offers and take whatever you want. That's not, that doesn't meet the definition of a sale. A sale is a final sale. So I think it's within the definition, but if you, if we want to edit it, everybody here can decide that we want to.
It's executed.
It's an execution.
No executed sale or lease shall be valid.
Right. It's an invalid sale if we haven't approved the actual sale between the two parties, between the town and whatever party is buying, is actually buying it. We have to approve that sale.
Yeah, I mean, I think we talked about this in, in maybe try to, tried to give this a short. All encompassing, one sentence that just says it all where you're not, you know, you can't, nothing is approved unless the town council. Whoever's sitting in his seat someday says that it's approved.
We can make sure the minutes say it.
We've got, we've got a lot to go here. So any, any uh, any additions or deletions of that one? Corrections, all right, show of hands, moving it to the notice phase. No, 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 it's just we're moving it to notice. So that's good. Luke, you okay out there?
Hundred percent supportive. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. All right, here we go. Moving on to item number six. American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, Mark.
All right, this is very quick because I see some gentlemen in the back who I want to, I want to hear more than myself. Um. Yesterday, the joint committee of the town council. And board of finance met and we heard from Russ Kimes regarding. The incident command vehicle and from Patricia regarding the proposed renovation of, of, for the town players. Both of these items have been approved by the board of selectmen. It was approved to move forward by the committee, so it is now in the hands of the board of finance. And pending their approval, it will move to the town council if it's approved, of course. Um, so there's nothing for us to discuss. Um, I will just note that the, the incident command vehicle, while it's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar proposal. The actual vehicle is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So just to keep that in mind, but again, nothing to discuss. It'll just be something for the future and you could do your due diligence between now and then.
Right, thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? Can we get like some information on the specs of the vehicle or anything?
Well, we, yeah, we will, Kim, and that's, that's a great, that's a great point. And actually, Russ will be presenting to the board of finance too, so um. If you want to sneak peek when he uh presents.
I want to see this thing.
Yeah, really.
Can you post it on the tablet?
Yeah, I want to.
Thank you.
Yes.
So this is going to come back to us later on.
This will come back to us. Nothing to act on. Um, there'll be plenty of time for discussion. Because the board of finance is going to have to discuss it.
Yeah, and both of these items have additional costs associated with them, but this is the ARPA portion of the, of the.
Yes, good point.
I'd just like to know if the town council can test drive it. Only if you drive, Rita.
You need a special license.
Rita.
Don't actually.
Rita, it's not a party vehicle. All right, uh, moving on. Item number seven. New Canaan Police Building. Oh, uh, no, we talked about.
No, we.
We just.
Yeah, it's all part of the same, same amount.
Come on up, guys. Uh, we've got the New Canaan Police Building Committee here tonight. We're going to get a quick update on the status of the police building renovation.
Are we going to take our session for this?
Yeah, I'll let you know. So anyway. Thank you for having us here. Bill Walbert, always with you in spirit, as you probably know, uh, joined by um, uh, three of. Yeah, but not watching late at night, I'll tell you that. Um, uh, three of our committee members, uh, Jim Bell and Mike Barle. And uh also here with a couple of our support guys, Tiger and Joe Zagareski. And of course, our new chief, John D Federico. Uh, so the team has uh stayed very much the same except for some guy named Leon, who I can't even remember what he looks like. But hopefully he's acting as a double agent for us as we speak. So uh, so the team has been the same and when, when we were here uh in the summer. We, uh, you graciously gave us one point two million to go with three hundred thousand that we already uh had in funds. So we had one point five million. To get the process going. And right now we are going. Uh, we are pretty much exactly where we thought we would be. Uh, which is good. So we have our drawings and um, we have a, a, an owner's rep. Uh, fellow by the name of Jean Tyrone, who worked with us on the Saks Building Project. And as it turns out that. Uh, Jim Bell, Patty Ration were in charge of the Saks Building Project. That was also on that building committee, so we have a lot of experience with uh Gene. And uh, today we were interviewing construction managers and uh, it's not a surprise that um. Projects in New Canaan bring in, bring out the best of the uh construction management world. Uh, we were very privileged to have some of uh. Some amazing teams present to us today. They did an amazing job and we have a difficult decision to decide who we're going to choose as a construction manager. Once we do that, we can compare costs um from uh provided by our architect and, and their pricing person. Um, provided by our owners rep Gene, you know, his estimates of the costs and of course by the construction manager. Because at the end, they're on the, they're on the hook in some degree if uh things don't uh. Work out. And between those three estimates, we'll come up with a final estimate. Is that fair? And um, then we will uh come uh with uh an exact number that we could come to the uh. Uh, town bodies to uh, to approve. It's actually been approved in, in concept. Um, at twenty seven and a half million, I believe. Um, but uh, uh, you know, things change, let's face it. Uh, we have seen no changes. I mean, I could look at you all the eye now and say, since what we do this summer and what we know now, um. We found nothing new that uh is a problem. And so uh. We're in a pretty, pretty happy place. Jimmy, when I.
Comment, it was probably come earlier for money than later because there are some very long lead time items.
Thank you.
Supply chain problems are really severe in electrical switch gear and in some construction, other construction items. And so we're going to need money to get those things on order, well before they're actually can be. And so we're going to need money to get those things on order well before they're actually can be installed.
Right, we spent today talking with, you know, the the professionals in this, in this industry, talking about how to work around, making sure you have the long lead lot. Lead time items. And in the end, uh, money does talk and having money. Uh, sooner rather than later to help procure things that are one year lead times would certainly help.
Be essential.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Right.
Um, the charts all pretty much say what I just told you. So as you, as you remember, the building is going to look, it's, it's just a refurbishment of the existing building. We're going to gut it to the studs. Uh, waterproof the the front. Remember there was water leaking in the, in the front because it used to be that. Ground didn't used to be there, right? That was, that was above grade before. So we're going to dig that. One of the first things that we do is dig that out. Would approve that. We're going to tear it on the back, put, uh, put the new, uh, Sally Port and cells on the back and, uh. Yep, so there it is. Um, the next one would show the, uh. Yeah, so that's from the back. Those are solar panels over, uh, the parking area. Um, there'll also be a storage shed off the back of the, uh, uh, property and then the front. So it'll look exactly the same. The biggest change will be the, from the, from the public's perspective, as they look at the building, we do, uh, architecturally appropriate windows. These are very important, also a long lead time item, um, and a refurbishment of the Coppola. Um, with modern building materials, but it will not change architecturally. It'll look exactly the same. So we don't need any. People worried about saving the Coppola. It will be saved.
Thank you for doing.
Just in better form.
Excuse me, um, can we have this presentation on our tablets? No, but can you put it in? Is there a floor plan or a site plan to see how far?
But we certainly have that.
Yeah.
And we could certainly get that for you, Christina.
Okay.
It hasn't changed dramatically from what we showed you guys in the summer.
The footprint is identical.
Okay, just to include it so we have it all together.
Exactly right.
Are there, are the, all the savings measures that we're trying to apply to the buildings besides solar? What about gas? Is that being? Address and what? Okay, and what about the connections that are now shared by EMS and the police department?
They're being, so they're being separated.
Okay, but is that part of your budget?
So the, so the EMS, um, boiler has already been replaced. So it's already been separated. There's a, a couple of utilities, small, small things that are included.
I thought electrical was also combined.
It has separate service, the generator is shared, and there's also a generator that you guys approved.
Okay, so that's already taken care of. Okay, all right. So there's nothing left other than minor things. And it's including your budget, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, we did talk about the transition of the, uh, uh, when the police were moved out of that building. Uh, and why am I losing my voice? Joe or Jim, do you mind talking about that?
I think what he was going to refer to is the fact that, uh, this whole, uh. A process of moving forward depends upon, uh, getting the school board moved into the new place.
Right.
On, uh, Elm Street. And then there's a short fit up period to to be. Do minor refitment down there in the old school board building. They get it ready for police, then moving them in. And those are critical steps that have to be done over the summer and into the early fall in order to get this project, keep this project moving on track.
And you're coordinating with the Board of Ed's schedule.
We're dictated by the Board of Ed's.
Okay.
The building committee is not going to get in the way of the professionals, you know, the town is handling this, but the police and the building departments are going to. Uh, coordinate this, this move, obviously waiting on the Board of Ed, uh, till their space is ready before they can get out. But the building committee would just really be. Uh, another wheel that doesn't need to be spinning.
Oh, we, we knew when we undertook moving all these different pieces in town and we were going to, it's not something you can talk about it. And then you actually have to do it. I mean, it's a, there's a. I, I don't remember a time when we've tried to do that many domino, uh, moves in town at the same time. So it's a, it's a lot.
Well, it really does matter, right? If the, we don't get the Board of Ed out and, you know, into their new space that they sign off on their new space. Then we can't bid out that, uh, spa, you know, the local street space for the police, which is going to take a long time. There's a lot of specialization, a lot of security. That needs to happen. Um, you know, they're working on that as we speak with their, with their vendors. And then, uh, once that is set, then they can make that move and we could start, uh, getting our construction people in the building.
Is there, is there a goal for completion?
Ball of twenty five.
All twenty five. I'm sorry, Mark.
No, that was, I was going to say, what, in an ideal world, when, when would you break ground or not break ground, but start?
Thanksgiving.
Joe, do you know when the lease ends on the Board of Ed space?
Um, the, the lease is month to month now. So it'll be, um. August, it's the end of August, basically, we'll be able to get the space from them once they move out.
But is the rent, is the rent locked in?
I think it's already been done.
Through the time that the police department will move out. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, uh, so I know last night the Board of Finance, uh, I think with Tiger, you showed a slide twenty seven point five million, which Bill mentioned. Uh, but there was also a slide up, uh, as part of that five million dollar training, uh, facility. You want to just touch base as far as? I mean, we don't have any, that's just a placeholder.
Well, we don't either. Okay, so the building committee is officially not involved with the, uh, trading facility, right? That is still currently being handled by the staff within the town as a lot of balls continue to move forward. And it's my understanding, and I certainly can't really speak to it officially, uh, that all the balls that were in the air this summer. Are still kind of in the air, which are, um. Looking for the police departments with current trading facilities and letting them share them with us. Potentially building a new trading facility in another community of which we will partner. Uh, there's also, uh, regionalization people that are working in Newtown, I believe, uh, potentially, though that is. I mean, under, yeah, has some issues as well, or potentially finding the space to build something here in our community that other. Communities would be able to share with us. I don't know anything really beyond that, other than all those balls are, are still in the air. And, um.
I can jump in, I can jump in on that quick. I attended the police commission earlier this evening and the police, police commissioner. Is in discussions with the first selectman. And they have a couple of locations in town they're looking at, looking specifically at two. They haven't identified. Those two spots, but those discussions are underway, uh, and, um, they're materializing, I think, on a, on a good clip.
All right, uh, let's see. Who else? Is that, is that Commissioner Foley out there? Hello, Paul, how are you? Do you have anything to add?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks, Bill. I was trying to hit the button so that you couldn't see me, but I couldn't press it fast enough. Um, Mike is correct. Um, look, the first selectman and a town and some town officials. Uh, employees are looking at a couple of locations and, uh, we, look, uh. I'll let Kevin, you know, do what he has to do to, uh, to get us to the point where we have a. Location where we can come back to you and, uh, and ask for that money, you know, on another meeting.
That's fair.
But, 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 uh, look, these things are, in my mind, are coupled. This is not a. Training center and a renovation. I see it as, as one unit, but that's certainly my opinion.
And the, and the building committee is, is very much on record as stating that we are one hundred percent behind. Uh, anything that moves police training forward is probably the most important element of our, of our police force that they're well trained. It's, it's, uh, something that's. There is, you know, incredibly important to the community. So, uh, we're obviously, uh, interested and in favor of anything that moves the police train. All forward.
Right, and I think the Newtown Center just isn't going to happen, uh, in my mind. It's just, it's, it's off the table in my, in my mind, so.
It's hard to, it's hard to handicap how these things are going to really play out.
Right.
What is the Newtown Center, Paul? What did you mean?
No, it, no, it, there, there, there has been talk from, uh, that group called West Cog to put a training center up in West. Up in Newtown, but, um, I think it would be dominated by people like Bridgeport and other, you know. Forces in that area, if they can actually even get it built up there. I mean, I just find it. In my mind, you know, very hard to, uh, imagine that that town is going to approve it.
Yep.
Rita.
I'm just curious, in terms of the, um, finding the location, it, it makes sense that they're going to be looking at locations and bringing it forward to us, but. Just curious if there's been any consultants hired or money being spent at all, looking.
Yes. Almost every place in town has wetlands, right? So any place that you can think about looking. Uh, has wetlands, and so you need to bring someone in to see if anything is even viable.
But there's not being done by the building committee.
No.
Correct.
So. So I'm, so where's that, I'm, where does that money come from?
Up to ten thousand dollars the Board of Selectmen can approve.
Can just approve it and that, that's out of curiosity. And then beyond that, it comes, we would have to approve that expenditure. Apartment head. Right. Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for our building committee? I just, we have the chief here tonight. Chief, I, I don't expect you to comment on the, on the, uh, building necessarily, but I wanted to just comment on. Uh, the train crash yesterday. I happened to drive through just as that train was, uh, entering our street and your guys did a great job, uh. Getting, getting, uh, things organized there. That was unbelievable, so.
That happened before?
Yes, every, 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 every five years it happens.
I sooner lies.
You would think with the number of breaks on a train, that wouldn't happen, but.
It is amazing. Google, I mean, I Googled because I heard about it. I Googled New Canaan Train Relignment, and there are many things that show up. It's the first time.
There are two town ordinance, you know, that the Historical Society sells showing the train going through the fence.
Wow.
Two for two different years, yes.
That's a good trivia.
We're lucky nobody was hanging a sign.
Now, the, the, uh, our, our emergency services did a great job. So please extend our, extend our thanks and gratitude. All right, that's it for tonight. Thank you guys. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. Appreciate the update. All right, item number eight.
Yeah.
We have the, uh, our demo, which is the capital expenditure capex process, uh. A little bit more discussion and color about the evaluation and compilation of our capex spreadsheet, which you all have in front of you. We've talked about this, uh, we agree that we're going to do sort of a demo, um. As we follow through the, the, uh, process, the, you know, our capital funding process this year, uh, to try to see if we can get this. Uh, spreadsheet off the ground and running. So Rita, why don't we?
Yeah, sure. So I, I don't want to take too much time because I know we don't have a ton of time. So it's very, it's very specific what, what, I think we should talk about today. And that's the criteria for this, but just to remind everyone, this is, this is a sort of a flexible, it's a tool. For us to be able to evaluate capex projects and compare and contrast, um, based on a common set of criteria that we've all aligned on. So, um, this isn't like, okay, everyone, like, if, I'm just going to take an example, and these are just, these are hypothetical. And you may not agree with the numbers that are in here. Well, just as an example, if we took the planetarium, right? The criteria along the top, you would score, right? Each of us would score and. Yeah, presumably, we're not going to be all scoring the same way. We may feel differently about how to score each of these projects. And that creates the discussion, like, why would you, you know, score a four, which should be a high number, or why would you score zero? And, and that's the discussion based on the criteria. So it's kind of, you know, based on co- a common sort of language. Um, so just as an example, the planetarium, a planetarium, um, utility would be, you know, how many people? Or groups does the project serve? Like, how useful is it? Is there a way to broaden the benefit? Are we increasing the utility of a current asset? So it's, it's all about how our townspeople are using. That particular, um, project. Safety is pretty straightforward, you know, is there a safety concern? Um, in this case, it would be zero, but if it was, you know, if you look at the, the replace the fitness equipment. There was a, a really huge safety concern, so that you'd give that a five. And the reason that's green is because that would. Green light it. That would, you would say, wow, even if we had low numbers on every other criteria. That alone might make us want to green light this whole project, right? So that's an example. If you look at, and again, I'm, Powerhouse Theater is down here and things have changed since that, that original presentation, but for instance, like. If a concern was out your costs, that would be a red. Red would mean stop, right? So if you were concerned about one particular criteria, you'd give it a low number. And that to you would be like a red light, like I don't know that I want to put this through, even though it might be high on other. Um, criteria, to me, that would, that would, that potentially might stop. The project or make me want to stop the project, right? So again, this is a way to create a conversation. So I think tonight, what I, what I wanted to find out from you all is the cri- is, is the criteria, I, I just kind of came up with these criteria. Is it right? Is this the right list? Um, would you take anything away? Would you add something? I, I, I would suggest we don't want to have too many criteria because then it gets too complicated. Um, I have seven here. Um, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go beyond ten and maybe that's even too many. Um, go ahead.
I would just say, if these are capital expenditures.
Uh huh.
There shouldn't be out your costs. They're just, they're capital, so.
Uh huh.
I, I, I don't know if. It, it's implied in my understanding that these are not, they should be out your cost. So like, something like that, I would.
Well, the reason why I have it on here, and I, I agree with you, except that if you said, okay, we're going to approve the capital expenditure for this particular project. And then it would require additional costs going forward. You would want to consider that.
Right, well, then maybe, you know, as we've discussed with other items, especially ARPA, does this? Require future support, you know, future budgetary support. Uh, or something like that as opposed to out your cost.
So you would, you would just want to change the vernacular or you say?
Vernacular. I understand where you're, you're, you're going with it, but I mean, outside of that, I mean. I think you've. You know, the spirit of everything you're doing here is, is great and, um. Maybe just some wording around it. I don't know if to- tonight's the night to, maybe we should submit.
Yeah, and that's fine. If you, if you want to think about it, yeah, instead of, but I like, I like where you're going with that. Maybe you'd want to. Retool some of the criteria, you may want to call it something different, or you, you might want to take it away completely. Um, and maybe it's unfair of me to say, okay, look at this right now and come up with your thoughts right now.
Right, be- because of the spirit of what you're doing here is great. I, what frustrated me last year is. The timing of, of items that appear, uh, being last minute. To me, that's a red light, right? Like, you just come to us last minute. You know, seems like maybe that should be a column, you know, was it, did it go through the proper process? Was it vetted properly? Sometimes the answer is no, and that may be something you think about in this, in this grid, um, but.
Yeah, I mean, I agree on the timing. I think that, you know, part of the discussion we're having around this is the fact that we had one or two projects last year that we all felt. Sort of came in right at the very end and, and, uh. Um, and that caused a little bit of.
Let's see if we're all unified on what we add to, to Rita's point, then you're essentially. Uh, red lighting it, sorry.
Right, so it's like proper vetting or like, well, we can come up with wording, but I'd like you to think that's, that's a really good suggestion, like maybe think about the wording with, what you would include. Um, but and I, and I have here, by the way, so I have the criteria on the left hand side, and they have questions that you're asking that go into the criteria, right? So, um, for added value, right? Does this project provide some kind of like intrinsic value to the town? Or does it differentiate the town from other towns, which we think is a plus, right? So is that? So planetarium, like in, in that instance, would be, would be a high number because it differentiates from another town. That could be a high number, or for some people, they might think, yeah, I don't think it really does. And again, that creates the conversation. The other thing I think is important is in, in the criteria. Is this would be a great list to provide to folks who are coming to us. With those requests to be, for, for them to be able to create, um, a proposal. That hits on each of these criteria and so that we can be evaluating it accordingly.
During the year you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's fair.
Yeah, I have a comment. Go ahead, Christina.
Right. I think that one of the categories that, that could be considered is putting the building categories. Because I'm looking at this building categories, and that would be whether it's parks, Department of Public Works, Board of Ed, municipal. Uh, emergency services, and the only reason for that is that, curiously enough, when I look at the sample projects that you put down. They relate to either entertainment or, um, one to Board of Ed and the rest to parks. And we shouldn't be basically allocating the capital of projects to one specific.
Interesting.
It should be dispersed, but it should rise to the moment on necessity and need and safety. So those, those, that criteria and the breakdown of it is important. But also where these buildings lie or where these improvement lies is just as important. But also where these buildings lie or where these improvement lies is just as important.
So you're saying add a column for category?
Yeah.
Yeah, or for department or something along those lines.
For category.
Yeah, category, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, I like that. Okay, Rita, I don't know if this is going to fit on the spreadsheet because I've got some more categories. We might have to get like a large, really large piece of paper, but I'm just going to throw this out there. So I had three suggestions. Yep. One is um the need and have that somehow supported with data or reports or just some kind of like, how, why is this even coming up? Like, what's the need? And then um the effect on mill rate, and I know that's really hard to do, but if it's a very, very large project, very costly, we could rate, you know, somehow rate that because that would mean taxes would go up. And my last thing is public support, because I think this is great for us to to be here talking about this, but we're here because of the taxpayers. And if the taxpayers don't support it, if there's not a large number of people, and I think you picked that up with how many people does this serve? But what I'm getting at, does the public want it? Are they asking for it?
But don't forget, Kim, that if the public doesn't want something that we appropriated, they can referendum the budget.
Yes, no, I understand that, but we're evaluating this, you know, just before it even gets to that point. I just, I'm interested to know if something comes up, like, you know, with the Dunning Fieldlights. I mean, you know, do people want it? Is there a a critical mass of people beyond just who it's going to affect? So you're distinguishing the idea of we're deciding what the utility is and and actually the popularity of that, like the the people that are coming forward, supporting it or not. So I think that's, I think that's an interesting distinction. Yeah, I mean, I think who's ever giving the presentation can get some kind of data on like, you know, like there's a five hundred football players or there's, you know, this is used for conferences or, I mean, just to kind of get the sense of like um how many people in the town actually want us to spend money on that. Yeah, I mean, I think that's interesting, yeah. Um in terms of the mil- the mill rate, I feel like that's a little I'm trying to process that because I would think that like all of this together would affect the mill rate and I must feel like that would be.
Dollar number per hundred thousand dollars or what, you know, whatever that number is, that's um constant. But what you're saying is if you had a big.
It's like twenty million, like what's our rating is like versus something that's like not as much, you know, like because then that would go into our decision, right? Because we don't want the budget to keep going up and taxes to keep going up. So we would then have to like say, well, we have to live within a budget. Okay. So we're going to choose something based on how much we have that we're allocating to capital. Instead of just saying spend, 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 and the sky's the limit, we we don't, we could bond everything, we don't have to worry about, you know, uh the tax rate. I mean, is this something that I think we have to be cognizant of, even though we're not the Board of Finance? Yeah. And do you think that, and because I I hear you, and I I thought of that under, and maybe this is, it's not clear enough, and it should be separate, under cost benefit. To me, that was like, i- if it's a higher cost, it's got to be a significant benefit for us to even consider it, right? So it it the cost benefit analysis would, to me, it, that's sort of, it goes, it slips into that category. That would be maybe one of the questions that would go under cost benefit. Yeah, that would be appropriate. Yeah, no, that makes sense. Yeah.
Um Steve.
Christina.
Um what I would like to see is expected life cycle, and I'll explain. For example, when we replace a kid's playground, what is the expected life cycle? So we can put it into the process of knowing ten years out or fifteen years out, when it needs to be replaced and whether or not it's a safety issue at that time, you're already covered. Um but the life cycle, whether we do a roof or we do a building, what what is the life cycle and what what can we expect going forward?
So I agree with that, and I was thinking that would, to me, that's like a little bit under utility, but that could be separate as well because um utility would be like um how long would this last? Like, how 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 long would this usage be, right? So if you have a project where this would last ten years, and we know that like that's the utility versus something that is a very short-lived utility, um that could either be a question or that could be separate. It could also go into thorough plans, like if someone's getting an estimate and they get a roof, there'll be a warranty for ten years, or the playground might have a warranty. So to me, that's up to the person that's presenting the plan to us, right? Um what what's the, how long is this going to last for?
But but part of that also is is your annual maintenance and your long time, long term maintenance uh and also personnel issues.
Wh- what do you mean personnel issues?
Well, I guess it require more personnel.
So if we had a park, it would be increasing our park and rec budget. That's what you mean? Okay.
So probably the biggest question, I think the biggest question I have other than this, you know, the the actual chart itself is the timing of the use of this in terms of the council. Uh how do we feel about, you know, the the Board of Finance will present their capital budget? We'll get past the capital budget um along with the with the regular budget. When do you feel that we would be filling this out? Is it before, during, or after? Well, how do you?
I'll be about, I mean, I think once we know what projects are coming forward, that's when we start, like, I'd start filling that in. Like, as soon as I know that there's a project that we're going to be looking at, I'd probably, again.
Oh, you would, yeah. The projects are easy to fill in and and sort of where they fall.
Right.
I'm talking about like scoring them. You almost have to get all of the presentations and all the data and absorb all that stuff before you would actually be able to personalize your own um scorecard.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think you're right. I mean, I think I think to me, I guess how I did, I I kind of did my own thing last year, like I did, this is, I did this informally.
Yeah.
For myself. And so as I got information, I sort of started filling things out because I'm crazy nerd that way. Like, I like to, I'm very methodical in terms of that, so um I think you're right. I think you need all the information. You can't make a decision with with no information. You can't, sometimes you don't have all of the information. So for me, it's, you know, it's filling it in as you go. But in terms of being able to discuss it, yeah, I think you need to have a pretty, you need to have a significant amount of the information first.
And if this was ever adopted officially, like we said, this year, it's a, it's a sort of a demo to see how it goes. But if 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 we, if the twelve of us, you know, turn this in and all of a sudden you've got a red a a red marker on one particular item, that item would, that's our responsibility to cut that item or punt it to the next year. So that's the.
Well, that's a discussion point. That's the thing. I don't, I don't see this as like um uh it's not like we all add up our numbers and we get, and you spit out a a decision.
But it it it.
It helps color our conversation. So as we talk about it, like, again, it cre- create, it creates the language that we evaluate. So we're not just saying, well, I think it's really, I talked to five people and I think it's a really good idea, you know, like it's, it's more about um using like facts and and substantiating our decisions on something a little bit more um meaty than.
Yeah, and you and you're able to, you're having, you're looking at and writing under the same criteria, and you're judging all the projects under the same criteria, which is
Exactly.
Way to do it.
And I I think some, if some, if one of us had like a red flag, I think that's a good discussion point. It's like, you know, I I I see this, and to me, this, this, this is a red flag. Let's talk about it. It's more of a discussion.
Perhaps, uh you know, in the so we don't obviously, this is going to require more more thought, but maybe this year, we identify you know, six or seven capital projects that we want to put through this criteria.
Significant ones, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, some, you know, you're not going to be, we're not going to be.
You don't have to debate everything.
Roof is a roof, right? It has to be replaced or you defer it, and it costs more the next year, and it could create that. I mean, there, but there's some items that there's always a debate. We should maybe identify them. And maybe to Christina's point, there could be some in each area of.
Yeah.
A- a- and we put them on, and we just go through it and that, and then we can see how we do.
And I think the most like beautiful part of this and what I like, because I'm a very visual person, if you did this scoring and um you'll, you'll begin to see where the greens are, where the reds are, where the yellows are. And if everyone has all greens, it's almost like, you know, it, it kind of leads you down the path about, it it really feels like it's good because you've got a lot of greens or 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 there may be a lot of reds, and that's going to indicate us like that, that's something that I think you're going to see things that are clear green and clear red, and then there's going to be the rest that probably do need the discussion, more of the discussion. And it's going to be clear.
All right, all right. I think it's fabulous. I love it. Thank you, Rita. Thank you, Rita.
Thanks.
All right. Moving on, we have item number, let's see, we are up to number nine, the appointment of the following Housing Authority. So we have an appointment of Peggy Danneman for a five-year term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. And Tucker, do we have Peggy here tonight? No. Okay.
That she she couldn't be here tonight.
Yeah.
But she'd already served.
Yeah. Yeah, obviously, I think most of us know Peggy personally, but does anyone, anybody want to speak, speak for Peggy uh tonight?
I think she's lovely. Um she's one of my neighbors and she um, she's, this is a real passion of hers. And so I wholeheartedly endorse her for the Housing Authority.
Yes, thank you, Hillary. Anyone else?
Steve. Uh Peggy's uh um educator is an architect, and I think that she brings the value of the experts and the expertise to the committee, and I think she should be reappointed.
Thank you, Christina. Anyone else?
I'll just say, because I have to plug it. Um Peggy is really responsible for the transformation of Lee Garden into
Wow.
the house into what's now the shed and and did all the work on that and made that happen. And and so she is very valuable to view the vacation link. So I I think she's fantastic, and she'll do, obviously, reappointment, great job.
Yeah, I mean, she's one of those people in the Canada that you see involved in numerous things and has a real handle on what's going on in town, so. Um I definitely support her as well.
And she's a lovely person.
Yeah.
She is so moved.
All right, so this seems like a very, this is a pretty easy one. So that was Penny, Christina and Christina.
Yep.
All in favor? And that's unanimous. Luke, you're out there still, right? Can't see you. All right, so um that.
Hundred percent.
All right, thanks, Luke. Appreciate it. So Peggy Danneman is is appointed till April thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Thank you, Peggy, for your service, and uh you, and we've got a lot of work ahead of us, so we're glad to have you uh in that role. Thanks again for your service. All right, um housekeeping, I had a couple of things before we go into executive. It's eight twenty-three, so we've got a few minutes here. On the housekeeping.
We do in committee.
Um we don't, I I was going to ask you guys, do you want to do committees tonight, or you want to move that to the twenty-seventh?
We can move it.
Okay, yeah, let's move it to the twenty-seventh because we're we're trying to get in executive by eight thirty. So uh just a couple of housekeeping things. One, um I talked to Joe Palo uh yesterday about the West Tower. And I I actually made a promise to him that I would talk to Ira Bloom, the town attorney, just to um discuss that eight twenty-four question again, because Joe's, you know, been diligent and he's followed up on it. And uh I'd like to give him an answer just on that. It's just on that one particular item. So I I will get to Ira and uh see if I can get, you know, get a little bit more clarification on that eight twenty-four decision.
Steve, can I just ask one thing? Could we get the opinion in writing by any chance?
Oh, sure.
I mean, if if that's.
So so Ira issued his opinion, so that's, that's the opinion, that's his, his opinion. Now, what, I don't expect him to, you know, give another opinion unless he's changed his mind since then. But if he has changed his mind or, you know.
That's right here.
I I meant, I meant in in um it with integrating what, sorry, just integrating what Mr. Palo, Mr. Palo said and and just like a written opinion that either counters those points or legally discounts them. Because I know he's been working super hard and, like you said, following up and all kinds of things. And he talked to the sighting council, and he feels, you know, very strongly that they take precedence over the process that took place here, so.
Yeah, and Ira, I don't want to put you on the spot because I haven't, I didn't even see that you're on Zoom yet. But um I did, I did talk to Mr. Palo, and I said I would talk to you and try to get um a little more clarity on that eight twenty-four so that we can answer his his questions. And, you know, I even, I even offered uh to try to get, put a call together or Zoom together, just so that, you know, we could have better communication. So I'll work on that with you and uh hopefully.
This is on the West Tower?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's sort of taking the role of, you know, he's one of the leaders of the of the neighborhood up there. And, you know, obviously, we want to keep everybody in the loop and uh make sure we, everybody knows that we're, you know, we're not ignoring that whole situation, so. But we don't have any new news. I told him we're working on the Utilities Commission. We haven't really gotten too far on that. We've been busy with all these other ordinances. But um we 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 haven't forgotten about uh, you know, the issue, so.
Steve, question for for you, since it's housekeeping. Do you do you see a timeline for this? Because it it seems.
Yeah, I mean, I, it's hard for me to answer if people ask a question, I don't have an answer.
And um, you know, I I you know, I prefer to have some sort of line of sight to when this is all going to come to a vote. Because ultimately, you know, it's been months now.
I I I agree. And and listen, you know, if, I think, to be fair, if Kevin was here tonight, he's on vacation, but if he's here tonight, we could, you know, try to get a good date certain out of him as far as when um, you know, when we can expect more information. But um the first thing I want to do is just get back to Joe on this eight twenty-four question, which is almost like a he, Joe views it as almost a separate question to the tower itself. He's, he's, it's more of a legal question than uh the issue of the tower. I think that's a whole separate, oh, the the cell tower itself is a whole separate thing.
Right, it seems like to me, there's two things we could ultimately vote on the eight twenty-four. And whether or not we want to put the tower, so it's.
Yeah, and I want to get a, I want to get a sense, you know, a legal opinion too about the uh, you know, I don't even know for sure about voting as a council on eight twenty-four, and I haven't researched that, so I'm going to get my arms around it.
Isn't that a planning and zoning issue?
Yeah.
Why in the world would we vote on it? I don't get it.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the discussion that.
Because it it unless it's not our territory. I totally understand.
He, Steve, I mean, I'm 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 happy to my file here. I I know I wrote the opinion a couple of months ago. I'm I'm happy to work with you or the whole council and 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 the gentleman also to explain it or or talk about it in public, whatever you'd like. We'll, we'll get it.
Yeah, so Ira, maybe that's the best thing to do is maybe we'll get you on our agenda for a meeting, and I'll invite Mr. Palo. And I, you know, this isn't something that we want to do behind closed doors because there's so many people involved in this. I'd rather have the discussion out in the open and and everybody can weigh in. We'll give Joe a chance to to speak at the meeting, et cetera. So um I, you know, I'd like, as I said, I think the eight twenty-four issue is a separate issue. It could be on anything. Um and that's, that's, it could be an eight twenty-four about, you know, a different, a different topic altogether.
I mean, just briefly, the the eight twenty-four is is a statute, and and it it gives, it gives the uh opportunity uh for certain municipal improvements, leases, sales, et cetera, uh to the Planning, Zoning Commission. Uh and it would only come to the council if there is a negative recommendation from the P and Z, and then it's subject to override by the council. So so that that part is just black and white. Uh but we 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 can talk about it.
Thank you. All right, I don't want to go too deep in the weeds on housekeeping.
Yeah.
And I think that was all I had. I just want to mention, uh before we go into executive, that um several of you were at the ribbon cutting of the library yesterday, and it went phenomenally well. Um obviously, they've opened up the new library, so congratulations to the library. We'll have Lisa here, I'm sure, during our um during our budget talk, so she'll talk more about what's going on over there. But uh a lot of good things going on at the library, and uh that's it. Does anybody else have anything for housekeeping?
Steve, could I just?
Yeah.
It just dawned on me. Perhaps this uh framework that Rita has is we should consider the cell tower in terms of creating a grid like this. Just, just a kind of.
Different criteria.
Yeah, different criteria, but it's interesting. It just came to my head, anyway.
Good suggestion. All right, so.
Sorry.
So it's eight twenty-nine. We're going to go into an executive session and which means uh I have to invite folks into the executive session. So um at eight thirty exactly on the dot, we are, we've got uh on Zoom, we've got Nick Bomante, we've got Ira Bloom. Tiger is in the back of the room. We've got Tucker in the back of the room. Uh is Valerie Fletcher on? On Zoom, okay? And then Cheryl Jones, is she?
I don't see her.
Okay. All right, and and I think that's all we have. So if you haven't heard your name called, then uh so we, so we need to make a motion to go into executives. So Penny makes a motion, second, uh Mark, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Hey, Wendy, thanks for coming to the meeting. Appreciate it.
Agreed, approved.
Tucker, do you just have a rollaway cut in your office or something?
Oh, I was kidding.
How about a pod?
All right, uh we just came out of executive session. It's nine thirteen PM. Again, it's a a regular meeting on February fifteenth, and uh we, at this point, we just need a motion to adjourn.
Some of second.
Uh just, okay, all in favor? Sorry, sorry, just, I I just want to, I, before we, before we actually go, I just want to remind everybody about our next meeting, which is odd. It's Monday night, it's February twenty-seventh. And it's in the boardroom. We're going to be nice and tight in, so. Yes, so we definitely need everybody to join us for that. That'll be a good meeting, so.
Is that a public room?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the twenty-seventh is a public meeting, so, you know, anybody that wants to join, we'll pack that boardroom. All right, thank you very much, guys.
Thanks.
See you.
Good night.